I don't have a gavel, so I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting tonight. Welcome and good evening and welcome to the February 11th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters that are germane to council. On our podium, we have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you will see a green light appear. After two minutes, you will see a yellow light. After three minutes, you will see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. Written remarks may be handed to the city clerk to be made a part of the record. The city code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address council. Copies of this ordinance regarding participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Reverend Ben Caldwell with Orca at Back of His Church provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Councilman Harris will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is a practice of this council to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are also welcome, but are no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Let's pray together. Almighty God, Creator, Sustainer of life, would you give us a strong sense of your presence and guidance here this evening? We recognize, God, that you don't need an invitation. You're omnipresent. But we are aware of our need for you, and so without you, we know we're empty. Our plans are meaningless without your counsel. Rather than allowing us to pursue our own plans, we ask that you'd guide us to the plans that reflect the highest standards, plans that honor and glorify your name. You've told us in Romans 13:1, "Everyone must submit himself to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except that which you have established." So we pray like you taught us, that your kingdom would come and that your will would be done, on earth as it is in heaven. May our leadership be diverse but unified. Help these men and women to daily face the challenges that our declining moral trajectory is creating. We pray that you would bless them and bless our city, bless your city. We give thanks that you are God who can move mountains, calm seas, and defeat enemies without help from humanity. And so we ask for joy and gladness, help and guidance. You are good, Lord, and we thank you for remembering this nation and this city. Bless this assembly, we ask, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Will you please join me as we recite the pledge? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And instead of a motion to excuse a council member, as a reminder to our audience, a few weeks ago, City Council passed an ordinance for our remote participation, eliminated times during the year and times of medical emergency. So this is a good medical emergency, but I'm seeking a motion to allow Vice Mayor Curtis Bethany to participate in this meeting from a remote location through electronic communications as a medical condition of members' family that provides care, preventing his attendance.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. At this time, please call the roll.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you, and I'm not gonna steal the Vice Mayor's thunder, but congratulations on the new addition to your family.
I appreciate you.
At this time, we have one presentation on the agenda this evening. It is my pleasure to honor some truly remarkable students who have shown exceptional creativity, talent, and dedication to their annual fall participation in the Hilton Art Walk Chalk Art Competition. Tonight, we gather to recognize the incredible artists who have participated in this event, showcasing not only skill, but also the power of imagination and expression. To our students, and you guys can come behind me as I read this. There's a lot of you, so I'm just gonna read one group one, alright? Is that fair? "To all of our students, I want to start by saying how proud we are of you. The artwork that you created in historic Hilton Village serves..." You can come behind, make like an art. There we go. "...serves as a beautiful reminder of the vibrant youthful energy that fills our community. Each high school team has demonstrated a unique vision and a commitment to your craft that is inspiring. The participation in this event is not just about winning. It's about the courage to put your work out into the world, to express yourself freely and to contribute to the fabric of our community. You've all shown that through art, we can connect, we can inspire, and we can tell our stories in new and exciting ways. As your mayor, I am honored to present each of you with a certificate of recognition as a token of appreciation for all that you've done through your hard work, your talent, and your joy. So I will call each school by the name and their winning category, and if that's you, just raise your hand, alright? Oh, wow. Okay, no worries. So how about this? I'll just read the whole list then. Best in show from Warwick High, teacher Tony Saunders-Burton. We'll clap. Most creative, Menchville High, teacher Sarah Clapper. Best use of color, Heritage High, teacher Madeline Smalls. Best representation of theme, Woodside High School, teacher Heidi Bogan. An overall grand champion, Denby High, teacher Rhonda Wagner. So congratulations again to all of our students. We look forward to seeing where your journey takes you. Congratulations. I think I did this. And once again, just congratulations to all the students. Thank you to the family members that supported them. They could not do it without you. And Councilman Ely made sure I got that in, so I appreciate you as well. Public hearing, page four, item E1, is a request to adopt an ordinance granting occasional use permit number Charlie Uniform dash 2024 dash 0012 to Rick J. Tavia and Cindy T. Malkin and W.M. Smith Contracting to allow for the construction and operation of an office on a 1.21 acre parcel located at 12618 Warwick Boulevard, Zone C1. At this time, are there any speakers?
One, sir. Mr. Raymond Suttle.
Mr. Ray Suttle.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Raymond Suttle Jr. I'm an attorney with Kaufman and Canoles. My business address is 11815 Fountain Way, Suite 400 Newport News, Virginia. I represent the applicant, W.M. Smith Contracting, Inc. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for their help in going through this process with the CUP. You may be familiar with the property. It's a property across the street from Dean and Don's. It was a dog kennel and training facility. The building got so bad that it's been demolished now. We're the contract purchaser. We'd like to... W.M. Smith Contracting, it has a business in Hampton, would like to relocate to Newport News, build a small contractor's office. This does come with conditions, which I'm sure you're aware of. We're happy to answer any questions. We think it's a good reuse of the property and a new business coming to Newport News.
Thank you. Any questions from City Council for Mr. Ray Suttle?
I just wanna say thank you for bringing that business over to the right city. Thank you.
That's my client.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Motion to close public hearing.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. At this time, are there any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 33, item E2, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the vacation of an existing 5,000-square-foot utility easement, a 1,302.5-square-foot easement, and a 214.5-square-foot drainage easement as part of the Newport News Shipbuilding Parking Now project. At this time, are there any speakers? I see we have one, Mr. Skip Smith, for questions only. At this time, is there any City Council questions? Okay, I think we're good. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. At this time, is there any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
So moved, seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Page 43, item E3, is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the vacation of an existing 6,000-square-foot portion of public right-of-way located at the 300 block of 38th Street, Huntington Avenue, as part of the Newport News Shipbuilding Parking Now project. At this time, are there any speakers? I see we have three questions only, as well as two speakers. I will start with the speakers, Mr. Alan Tanner and Mr. Neil Rosenbaum.
Good evening, members of council.
Good evening.
My name's Alan Tanner. My address is 11835 Fishing Point Drive, Suite 103 in Newport News. I'm an attorney, and I also assist in the management of Victory Parking Management, which manages over 1,000 parking spaces located in downtown Newport News. I am here to express my concern on behalf of the parkers that I've been in touch with over the past several weeks when this parking lot was really removed from the parking regime that the shipyard currently has. What is of most concern is there is a procedure to follow when there is a vacation of a public right-of-way. It is prescribed in the statute. There are notices to be given. The parking lot owners that I represent have received no notice. Their only way out going north on Warwick Boulevard is 38th Street. It's a one-way street that runs from the main gate of the shipyard, or very close to the main gate of the shipyard, to Warwick Boulevard. And as all of you know, down there, from 2:30 to about 4 o'clock, you need a straight run. And this impedes that run for all of those parking lot owners that are to the south, the south part of 38th Street. And they certainly have rights to go up and down that street. I think, and I met with the city attorney, the Newport Shipbuilding on that property in 1952, and the city took away or vacated their right-of-way back in the day and leaving only this little portion left of 38th Street. But since 1952, it's been a public right-of-way. Public has had the right to go across there and then reestablish a public right-of-way. And I think that's a lot of technical stuff, but the bottom line is, there is a procedure to vacate these streets prescribed by the statute. As far as I know, my clients have received no notice of any of the requirements of the statute when it comes to vacation of the street. Whenever you come up here in front of council, you have to do it with humility, and you probably have to suggest a solution. There is a statute that allows the city, who has the airspace above their right-of-ways, to sell their airspace for the benefit of the taxpayers to the developer. The developer that is along that right-of-way is gonna put a parking deck, and they can sell and continue that right-of-way as long as it's 16 feet in clearance all the way through the project so that parkers and other citizens can get to and from Warwick Boulevard, and the city can receive the benefit of selling their airspace over and above this public right-of-way all the way down to Warwick Boulevard. There's a procedure. They wouldn't have put this in the statute if that procedure should not be followed. I submit it should be followed. It is a public right-of-way. There've been families that have been traveling that from their property for the last 70 years. I think it's the last 100 years. And I think we have to be very careful as council to make sure all items are covered when you do something like this, to really alter the synergy downtown, especially with parking. There is nothing that's more important to the workers that work down there than their parking spot. And when that is challenged or changed, it creates havoc. And I would submit to the city, look at the statute, see if it would be appropriate to go through a certain procedure in order to do this. And if that's the decision of council, so be it. It can be appealed, but that's up to the parties that would want to appeal. But I suggest that to council and ask you to defer until all items are exhausted under the current statute. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, next up, Mr. Neil Rosenbaum. For the city clerk's office, when the timer... We can't hear the timer, so just verbally raise it, because we know we can't hear from over here. Thank you. No, you're good. You're good. Just for everyone who follows afterwards, that machine's broken up there, I just noticed. Over to you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I am Neil Rosenbaum. I live at 11 Meeting Road in Newport News. Have resided here since birth, and I represent and am an owner of several parcels that are impacted by this decision this evening. I was reminded before I came here this evening that, as an owner of adjacent parcels, that I had no notice of this. In fact, I spoke to the city attorney several weeks ago, who invited me to come tonight, who said that there was a hearing tonight on this subject. I had no knowledge of it. Many of our parkers that park between 36th, 37th, 37th, 38th use 38th Street as an exit to go home. The city thought that it was a very important part of the exit strategy of parkers to go home, in addition to the main gate of the shipyard where vehicles are leaving there and then heading north or west on Warwick Boulevard. They thought so much of this exit route that they put a light there. There are not a lot of lights if you're coming down Huntington Avenue from where it splits off from Warwick, but our city planners and our city fathers and mothers at some point felt that this was an important exit for downtown, for residents of Newport News and others, to go home to get to the James River Bridge and put a light there on 38th and Huntington Avenue. I feel tonight that I have not been contacted before tonight or this week about this change that was happening. We all saw the contracts in the newspaper about the parking garage, but there was no public discussion. I was never invited to a hearing to have my voice heard, and it will impact a lot of our clients who park on the lots downtown to get home. And I was hoping that there would be a solution. I'm glad that my friend, Mr. Tanner, came up with one of many solutions that could have been proposed had there been a hearing. And according to state statute 15.2-2006, there's a procedure that must be followed in these cases, and I was never notified, and the statute indicates that surrounding landowners should be notified of this action that is about to be taken, that deletes a road that's been there forever, all my life, and that parkers will no longer be able to use that road as an exit strategy to get home after work. So I thank you for hearing me, and I would love for the conversation to continue. I would love for the council not to vote on this matter tonight, but to go through the proper protocols as the state statute requires and allow some more discussion on the subject and maybe some alternative strategies to be employed, such as Mr. Tanner just suggested. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We'll have Mr. Skip Smith come up for questions at this time. I have a question, but I'll defer to council. If there's any questions for Mr. Skip at this time?
I have the same thing. Well, whatever. Good evening, Skip.
Good evening. Thank you.
But I do have some concern about what the residents are saying, what the business owners are saying. If it was a process, and I think the council, we should be concerned about this, if there was a process, why wasn't... According to them, why wasn't the process followed?
Well, first off, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I am Skip Smith, 110 Jefferson Avenue, Newport News. I'm gonna let the city attorney address the process, but what we're asking for is a vacation of a very... If you look in your packet, a very small portion of the street. Newport News Shipyard owns the balance of that street, so they can close... And that conveyance of that was done many years ago. So they can close that portion of that street at any time. So we're only asking for the small portion that's at the front be vacated so that we can cover that.
And it's already owned by the shipyard?
Yes, ma'am. The bulk of that street is owned by the shipyard.
And the question I have is, I know we've talked a lot about the Navy project in downtown. Do we need this to continue forward?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
This is a major benefit to Parking Now and what we're trying to accomplish downtown for sailors and the shipbuilders.
Yeah, because the main thing you're trying to accomplish is to be able to work with the shipyard to add additional parking.
By closing this and building the parking deck, we'll add approximately 2,300 more cars to that area, which is a major benefit to both parks.
Right. Thank you.
Is there any further questions? And then if there's not questions, I'll turn it over to the city attorney. But is there any questions for Mr. Smith at this time? Okay, we're good, sir.
Thank you.
I'll now turn it over to the city attorney to make his comments.
Mr. Mayor, the statute requires that notice be published in the paper of the...
Sorry, it's hard to hear you, Mr. City Attorney.
All right. The statute requires that notice be published in the newspaper of the public hearing. Tonight is a public hearing, and notice was properly published. As has been stated, the balance of the street was vacated in 1952 and conveyed to the shipyard at that time.
So can I just follow up, make sure I'm understanding? So that statement that the shipyard could close that street down anytime is within their prerogative?
We're talking about different sections of the street. There's a section of the street that the city is vacating tonight. And there's a section that was vacated in 1952 that was conveyed to the shipyard at that time. They own the feasible title based on the conveyance at that time.
I think the way I understood that, the answer that was presented is that the street itself, that block, if the shipyard wanted to close it down, they could. So essentially, not having that parking garage there or having a parking garage there would not change the position of the shipyard if they ever wanted to shut that section of the street down. I might be...
And Councilman Long, we can't hear you. If you could speak into the mic, just as you...
Yeah, so the question that was asked was, or was the statement, that the shipyard owned that street and they could close it down at any time. So I'm trying to get clear clarity on, is that a true statement that the shipyard could close it down? Because if that's the case, then a garage would be acceptable in that.
Right, yeah. The shipyard has title to that street. It was vacated in 1952, and City Council conveyed it to the shipyard by deed at that time. So that's their property.
Oh, okay.
I just have one last question, Mr. Mayor. So just for clarity, we followed the proper procedures and protocols when announcing the public hearing for this project?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Is there any further questions from City Council? If not, motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the ordinance.
Move adoption.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. At this time, any discussion? Hearing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. Item F contains the following items. Page 48, minutes of the organizational meeting of January 14th, 2025. Page 54, minutes of the regular meeting of January 14th, 2025. Page 67, minutes of the work session of January 28th, and minutes of the closed meeting of January 14th. Page 108, minutes of the regular meeting of January 28th. And page 117, a resolution of the Council of the City of Newport News establishing a policy for remote participation in City Council meetings through electronic means. And one more, page 122, resolution of the Council of the City of Newport News establishing a policy for public participation at city council meetings. Motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F6, all inclusive.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Yes. Request for the floor, Mayor Jones.
Vice Mayor.
So remind me, do we have to, Mr. Attorney, do we have to approve this each year?
Yes, the state statute changed regarding FOIA so that you have to adopt the remote participation policy each year now. So you adopted the policy last year. This is just re adopting a policy to maintain compliance with the state code.
All right, thank you. Sorry about that, Mayor Jones.
Are there any further questions? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other city council actions. Page 128, item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Item G1 is a request to adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute an MOU between the City of Newport News and the Colonial Soil and Water Conservation District for participation in the Virginia Conservation Assistance Program. This program provides financial and technical support for stormwater management projects on private properties to address flooding and erosion. The MOU outlines a partnership in Newport News assisting the engineering department with responsibility for outreach, community engagement, and site evaluations while also permitting periodic inspections over the next 10 years. I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers at this time? I see none. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Appropriations, page 136, appropriations, item H, Mr. Manager.
There's only one appropriation this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating a total of $1,620,863 from the Department of General Services Fund Balance Account to finance various public building, renovation, and repair projects, as well as purchase replacement vehicles for Department of Public Works functions. I recommend approval of the appropriation.
I see there are no speakers. Motion to approve item H1.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Motion carry, seven zero.
Citizen comments, item I, citizen comments on matters to remain to council. I will call each name in the order appears in front of me. Aaron Easter. Yeah, you can start. Just watch them for the clock. You're good.
My name is Aaron Easter, and I'm coming before you again as a member of Virginia organizing to advocate for the development of a regional homeless shelter. We have been meeting with Newport News City Council for the past several years, and before more progress could be made, Councilman Long said that he needed more data from a housing study, which has since been completed by the firm Beam Advising. He stated that the study would advise the council on how much to fund the shelter. So now that has been done, we're here for answers. The Hampton City Council has already publicly stated that they are willing to work with Newport News on the shelter and have earmarked money to support this effort. So we want to know why Newport News so far wants to be one of the only seven cities that is not addressing housing insecurity and homelessness. We know that Norfolk and Virginia Beach already have shelters to assist the most vulnerable in our communities, including young students, the elderly, and our military veterans. We have 152 total postcards of support for the shelter. And these include our neighbors, includes city council members, and even state delegates. So we need a resolution for this now and 2025, and this can't be put off any further.
Thank you, sir. And you can give those to the city clerk if you wanted to. Dana Mitchell, and then Tim Davis. Yeah, as long as the mic can, can we get a handheld mic? How about this? They're going to get you a handheld. Nope, it's right there. Mic check, can you hear it?
Yes.
Nah, I, yeah, don't worry, the mic's coming to you. You're good.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Phillips and city council members. My name is Dana Mitchell. I am mostly known as Buttercup. For the past 25 years, I have had a successful business owning and operating Buttercup's Fancy Face Painting, one of the most sought-after businesses in Hampton Roads. This is Sir Diddy Bob. He's my newest business partner. He's my emotional support animal. And we are here to present the most innovative business to the great city of Newport News. We are Hampton Roads' first and only mobile ice cream trailer for dogs. A innovative business model that I have researched, developed, and created. And I only got three minutes, so I won't be long. A dear friend of mine, Camille Robinson, passed away during COVID area from a diabetic coma. I used to take care of Diddy, so her son gave me full custody of him. Animals can be very therapeutic, and we understand that mental health is very important, especially right now. And we have to understand in 2025, we really have to thrive to stay alive. So when he gave custody to Diddy of me, I just recently became a first-time home buyer. Woo-hoo, hallelujah. Much of you know, if you are a 1099 business owner like myself, it is a very, very long process. It took me six months. I went through three properties, but I'm finally a homeowner. During this process, my dog was my best friend. He helped me get through anxiety. He was very supportive in this matter. And I just had like a grand idea moment that God gave me and said, start a business with your dog. So we have formed Dana and Diddy's Doggie Delectables, all-natural gourmet frozen dog treats. And we would like to bring this great business model that I have created to the forefront of the great city of Newport News. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Davis, and then Matthew Moskell.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Tim Davis. I reside at 30 Elm Avenue, Newport News. My wife and I, 13 years ago, started a new business. We approached the city of Newport News, and the business was the freestanding ice vending business. At that time, the city did not have an ordinance in place that allowed that business. So we worked with the city staff and the city manager at the time to get a new ordinance passed specific for that business. In that ordinance, there was a restriction that stated we could only be on properties that are commercial, three acres, two acres or larger. So because of that restriction, we were only able to find two locations where we could have this business in Newport News. We've been in business now for 13 years in Newport News. It's a very viable, successful business. We sell ice for about half the cost of the most retail stores, and it's very convenient for our customers. They drive right up to the machines, buy their ice through a vending operation, and they don't have to go inside a store, they don't have to deal with going and paying at a counter. Our clients are restaurants, contractors, and of course, like church functions, birthday parties, you name it. It's every type of party or get-together that people will buy ice and they use our ice machines. One of our machines is on Sherwood Shopping Center. As you know, the city owns that property, and they're going to demolish everything, and we're required to move. We cannot find another place because of that two-acre restriction. We want to stay in Newport News. So what I'm asking is that for city council to sponsor a ordinance change to remove that two-acre restriction so that we can find a location to move our machine. That machine on Sherwood Shopping Center is one of the best-selling ice machines in the state. There are 40 machines in the state right now. There's over 4,000 machines in the United States across the entire country. So this is a viable business. It's the only way in the future people are going to buy ice because they can buy a lot of ice very cheaply. It's freshly made, it pours right into your cooler, or you can buy it as a bag. And some of you may have used our machines, I don't know. But we're coming to you today, my wife and I, because we don't want to lose our business Newport News. We've been here for 25, 30 years now, and we want our business to stay here, and we need your help. So that's why I'm here today, and I ask for your support in removing that ordinance restriction so that we can get our machine moved to another location.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Councilwoman Vick.
Yes, and I do appreciate you coming, but I know we've had an extensive talk when you called me in reference to your situation. And so, and I do apologize for taking this long to get back with you because we were working through it with Alan, with the city manager, and he, I don't know if he has a report tonight, but we were trying to work through to see if we would be able to change the ordinance or whichever way we could go to, to help your business. But I do apologize for taking this, that has been no excuse. I do apologize for taking this long.
No, that's fine, Councilwoman. I appreciate your apologies, but there's no apology needed. I just want to be able to get this moving so, because sooner or later, somebody's going to call me and they're going to, or, you know, say, Mr. Davis, you got to move that machine by such and such a date, and I don't have a place to move it. And the only way I can do that is for city council to approve some changes to the ordinance that opens the door for my business to survive. And, you know, otherwise, I, you know, I have to either sell the machine or I have to go somewhere else with it, you know, some other place, you know, and I don't want, I live here, I want the machine to stay here, my customers want the machine to stay here. And so, you know, I need help.
We'll take a look at it, and somebody will give you a card right now and we'll follow up. They'll be right behind you. We'll take care of it.
Thank you much. I appreciate your time.
All right, Mr. Davis, and we'll, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Vick.
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
I would be happy to provide city council with an update in your correspondence package. I'll defer this matter, or I should say, refer this matter to the planning department. We have had some initial conversations, and I do recall some years ago when the city established the ordinance to allow for this business. And so it's been, you know, operating successfully at this location. And I believe that we can review the existing ordinance, the constraints around its location because it can only be located in certain areas and within a certain proximity. And those are all components that we can look at and refer, and hopefully be in a situation to refer this matter back for council consideration.
Quick question.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
When is the gentleman's lease expected to run out?
We can get that information. And I agree, I think that the question is sooner rather than later.
Right. And essentially, I mean, Sherwood is going to be, it's going to be a while before it comes online anyway. So I agree with Councilwoman Vick, and I'm glad that the manager is looking into this. So I would support it, but I just want to make sure we're not forcing the gentleman and his business to vacate Sherwood as of right now, when we know the project is still a ways out. So that's my only comment.
Got you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Matthew Moskell. And then will be Mr. Lila Hines.
Good evening, city council.
Good evening.
My name is Matthew Moskell. My address is 12779 Teaheskey Lane, 23602. And I'm a business owner of Matt Smack &amp; Max located at 13650 Warwick Boulevard. I'm here to talk to you about a smaller issue, how littered I believe our city is and what we can do about it. I find driving almost every intersection along Warwick and Jefferson, and I have lived between Huntington, now up through Denby, every intersection is littered with either small pieces of glass and plastic or larger things that people just so happen to leave out. I see trash in our neighboring business lots and in my own neighborhood. I'll clean up trash at our city parks when I'm there with my family. And while there is minimal trash being cleared, medians with plants and trees are all being cared and maintained for. I can't tell you tonight how much the city spends on grounds maintenance because it is not a line item in our city budget. But the 2025 general fund is $624 million. And as of 2023, our population was of 183,000 people. So for this year, the city is spending over $3,400 a person, which is fairly large. And as a resident and business owner, I find I pay a lot in taxes, and the city feels gross and kind of is gross in many areas, and I believe we can do better. Solutions, we can do less mowing and more cleaning. It's possible to just do both and have two teams working at the same time. I'm not sure how the Public Works Division deals with things like this. And it's possible to campaign community-wise as well and get larger businesses on board and community leaders and churches and lots more types of advertising as opposed to having people like adopt a street or a highway or things like that. Nobody wants to take on a larger project like this by themselves. And then I suppose the last question I have is, how much more can the city help me help them? Because I can take care of my lot, and I can help take care of my neighbors' lots and neighbors at home as well. But as one person, even in my own little circle or community, there's only so much that I can do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, citizens and city council.
Good evening.
My name is Leila Hines. I live at 100 Leeds Way, and I am the founder of The Miracle Project. Quickly, I know I have three minutes, I just wanted to give a special shout out and thank you to the City of Newport News. This winter, I was able to be at the Winter Carnival alongside Councilman Marcellus's Reup Project. With the help of family and the City of Newport News citizens, I was able to donate over 500 items to the community. I want to clap it up for myself. Tonight, I just want to give a special shout out and highlights to a couple of people. The first person, well, organization is Sparkled by Natty and the Hot Seed Podcast in Baltimore, Maryland, the Denby Community Center, and City Hall for allowing me to have drop-off locations. Councilman Rob Coleman, thank you so much for your donation. Everyone loved that, what you have brought over. My grandmother, DeeDee Clark, and my lovely parents, Tanisha and Stefan Hines, the citizens of Newport News once again and corporations. Lastly, my godmother, who is a new-elect school board member, Rashina Harris. Also, my godfather, which is his birthday month, Councilman Marcellus Harris. Happy birthday, early birthday. And just thank you so much for all the support and help with this project. I couldn't do it without you guys. I'm still collecting, still now, for the next batch of The Miracle Project's items to be dispersed. Thank you so much to the City of Newport News once again, and God bless.
Thanks, ma'am. I think I, is Chris Fryman here? Did I skip you? Yeah, apologies, you're up next. Yeah. Yeah, you're up next, sorry. For some reason, you already clicked on my screen. Chris Fryman, and then Bethany Gold will be the end.
Hey, city council, Mr. Mayor, I'll try to be brief on this. I'm going to talk about, the first thing I learned in economics, and that is there is no free lunch. A cost has to come from somewhere or someone in order to get a service or good done. I want to talk about the Hampton Roads Sewer District or Sanitation District and the Swift Project. And what that is, is I had to research on- And what that is, is I had to research on this one a bit. I saw the work session where the Swift Project came and talked to the city about removing PFAS chemicals and whatnot from the water. What happened, I guess, is that our aquifer has depleted down and needs to be replenished. So the solution is to put, to drill down into it, take our HRSD water, clean it and return it back into the aquifer so the salt crust doesn't collapse. I have some concerns on the cost allocation. I know there's a bunch of research or there was going on on this, but what concerns me is I came across a Minnesota water report and what it showed was, they ran into an issue with a company dumping these forever chemicals or PFAS chemicals into their water system. So they had somebody do a study and what it showed was a company can buy these chemicals for fifty to a thousand dollars a pound, but to actually remove them from the water could cost us anywhere between fourteen to twenty-eight million dollars a pound. So it can add up. Now, there's a bill right now in the Senate called SB eight-fifty. And what that does is it allows sewer and water to petition the state corporation commission to take eligible infrastructure costs, replacements and enhancements, or EIRE, and tag it on. And I'm worried that's going to increase our costs of sewer or water or anything like that because if we have grants and funds, like I know what you ran into with the coal yard, I saw that on Wavy, I'm worried that it could happen with other things where the costs of those infrastructure items get pushed back on to us, but it could be in, like, you know, I don't want to pay for a company dumping things or, like, I, I understand production. I just want to make sure we're not sharing the cost of a business and they're increasing their profits, but then it hurts our bottom line or our pocket itself. So, I'm sorry. I didn't prepare much for this one. But, um, and just to kind of put things in perspective nationally, we're at the bottom of the watershed. I went to the living museum and what it showed was you have Michigan, you have Pennsylvania, all these states, and we're at the bottom of that watershed. So if they increase production in a different state, we'll eventually get down here with those forever chemicals. Sorry. I'll go ahead and let you all go. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Bethany Gold. I live at three-eighteen South High Street in Franklin. I wanted to bring to the council's attention of a situation that happened on April fifteenth of twenty-three. An amber alert was issued and after being stopped and detained on the side of the road at gunpoint in Georgia with my two daughters, a warrant was then issued for my arrest for parental abduction on the sixteenth. All of this was done unlawfully by the Newport News Police Department as I had court-ordered custody of both of my daughters that were with me and my documents on hand. A year later, after being held in continuous incarceration, I was then convicted of parental kidnapping with a completely different temporary expired order from October thirty-first of twenty-two with the expiration of January twenty-fourth, twenty-three. This being a direct result of the Newport News Police Department's lack of following through with the proper and true verification processes of the information that was provided to them. Travis Moss, which is my child's father, and the guardian and litum Rebecca Lawrence reported false information to Detective Stewart by providing a fraudulent custody order and false statements. Though I have credible documentation to prove all of which I have stated and have provided such to Chief Drew, Lieutenant Rogers with Internal Affairs, the city manager's office, Howard Gwen with the Commonwealth's Attorney, my complaints and request for an investigation to continue to be dismissed and ignored. I would like to know where the custody order that was used to arrest me, I would like to see this, I have yet to see this, the Newport News Police Department, the courts, nor my criminal defense lawyers have ever provided me with this missing document. And I would like to know why the Newport News Police Department refuses to investigate these crimes against me and why wasn't the proper verification process done before issuing the amber alert and the warrant for my arrest done on the document that was provided to them on April fifteenth of twenty-three? And I have all of my documentation with me to show everything. And that's all.
Thank you, ma'am. If you want to, I don't know if you have copies of it, if you want to.
I do not.
Okay, so if you have copies, you can give it to the city clerk and she'll make it, she'll give it to us.
Can I make copies and provide them to, where would I go?
To Ms., uh, what, which floor are you at, Ms. Mabel?
Ninth.
Ninth floor at City Hall?
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Of course. Our next item will be new business. Mr. Manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I have just one item this evening. I think we've already recognized the addition to the Vice Mayor's family, so I'd like to once again say congratulations to you and your family. You will now have, you will now be forever changed with Christmas and birthdays and many happy occasions and may you and your wife and family be blessed with a, a, a young voice in your lives for, for, for now and forever going forward. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. City Attorney.
Just the same thing, congratulations to the Vice Mayor and his growing family and catch those winks of sleep where you can, sir.
City Clerk.
Yes, sir. Best wishes and congratulations to Vice Mayor and his family. Happy belated birthday to Councilwoman Vick. Happy birthday to Councilwoman Coleman, coming up in a week or two, and also Councilman Harris, who also will share a birthday this month.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Vick.
Well, I just want to say I do appreciate, I really was against moving, I got to be honest, against moving the council meetings around the city, but I have to honestly say since it was voted for, it has been a, a complete pleasure to be able to come to different locations and hear the things that you share and your, and the different parts of the city and, and to us as a, as the mayor and council. And also, aside from my birthday happening, I just had such exciting weeks. Those of you who may, may have been looking at the news, I have a nephew, Michael Vick, who's been a very great NFL superstar, but he's been assigned the coach of Norfolk State University football. But that's not all the best piece. He's just recruited my grandson, my grandson number one, Shamar Vick, so, on the team. So it's been so exciting and that's, that's all I have.
Congratulations. Councilwoman Neely.
I just want to thank everybody for coming out today, all the citizens. All your feedback is definitely appreciated. We love when citizens come out and express their concern and their vision for Newport News. Also like to congratulate Curtis Bethany, your new baby daughter. I know you could be a great father, excellent father, and now you have a little bit of time, you can, um, leave us alone. She will keep you really busy.
Councilwoman Harris.
And good evening to everybody and definitely thank you for coming out on this rainy and cold evening to come out and share your, your participateness process with us on tonight. I also want to say congratulations to Vice Mayor on the birth of his daughter, welcome to the fatherhood club. And also want to extend my happy birthday greetings, wishes to my colleagues, Councilwoman Vick and Councilman Coleman. Now I want to thank everyone who participated in the Winter Carnival, all of the city staff who helped put that on. We were able to partner together with our eighth annual re-up school supply distribution and it was another phenomenal year for us and those that participated. I have a, a list, a long list of people who assisted along the way. I'm not going to call everybody's names because I know I will forget somebody, but I do want to acknowledge the Garrison Family Group for partnering up with us, the Co-Link Foundation who helped us out, to the many, many volunteers who came out at some point to help distribute the school supplies and to Ms. Attorney Shannon Jones who helped us out, to Miracle Customized Event and Consultants who helped us out, and to the fire department who stood out there and, and I saw Chief Rogers, right there, Chief Rogers in the back who helped us out along the way. And there was a, a lot of others, but I just wanted to highlight those. And to my goddaughter who came and she spoke earlier, Ms. Leila Hines, she is a, speaking of Norfolk State, she's getting ready to graduate from Norfolk State, but this is her third, I'm getting old, third or fourth year that she has partnered with us to distribute mittens, gloves, hats, socks, as we are in this winter season. So I'm proud of her. And she took that on herself. We didn't coerce her at any moment, so I'm thank you for doing that for our community. In addition to that, we also, I wanted to say thank you to the citizens of Newport News who sung happy birthday to myself two weeks before my birthday. But it really made me feel good to be out there with so many of our citizens that sung and to my colleagues on the council who came out there and supported that as well. I really appreciate y'all being out there on that day. Now, to the most important part I want to get to, I'm trying to get back to the time when we were able to highlight our young people here in the community and tonight is the first time in a long time that I'm able to highlight one of our young people who has actually stayed the whole meeting. If Mr. Quincy Hitchcock could stand, please. This young man, yeah, Mr. Quincy. I just wanted to highlight this young man on tonight. He is a fifth grader, tall fifth grader at Highlandwood Elementary School. This is his mom beside him. And I actually, yeah, go stand there, everybody see. And I actually was a graduate of Highlandwood Elementary School myself. But this young man's been doing a great job at Highlandwood Elementary School. He loves playing with his Hot Wheels and playing with his video games and his future aspirations is to become a meteorologist. So he could tell us about this weather that we're having. But in addition to that, he also loves playing basketball, so after he plays in the NBA, he can tell us about the weather. He's getting great grades and does a great job in school and his proud mother who's standing beside him on tonight, I just wanted to highlight him because he's always doing a great job and doing great things in the community. And his mom always greets us here in the Denby Community Center with a nice big smile and sometimes a hug. And just wanted to make sure we gave them the recognition that they deserve, especially for this young man who's doing a great job in school, going to middle school, and we'll be proud of what he becomes in the near future. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones. Thank you all.
Councilman Long. Councilman Long.
I too want to congratulate Vice Mayor Bethany and Samaje on the birth of their daughter. I remember my daughter born two years ago. These are times to cherish and enjoy every moment of it, of it. Also want to thank everyone that came out tonight to provide comments, questions, take notes down every time when, when you come out and speak. So really do appreciate people coming up and giving us, I would say, different homework assignments to kind of look into and see how we can better make city Newport News. I have not forgot about the Virginia organizing and that homeless study is in the draft phase. There at some point in time, and the city manager can speak better to it, at some point in time and in near future, we should be having a work session to talk about what that homeless study, original homeless study looks like. So I'm looking forward to that document being finalized. Last week I had opportunity, Massey Gardeners, they hosted a educational speaker and spoke of the impact of deer overpopulation in Northern Virginia, where their focus was on how deer overpopulation affects our natural ecosystem. But one thing I did get to learn a little bit about is some of the Northern Virginia cities, different kind of strategies. Maybe a few months ago, we extended the urban archery ordinance here, so I'm really interested in seeing if that has made, that makes an impact to the population size of deers, but it's really going to involve neighborhoods and private owners who actually embrace it to actually help decrease that population of deers. But I did take away from that, the speaker, which I saw that there are some other opportunities the city could potentially look into, but right now it's more so focusing on how do we really bring the neighborhoods and the private owners into this process because it can't be a city effort alone. And that is all I have. Thanks.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. First of all, extend my congratulations to my colleague, Vice Mayor Curtis Bethany, on the birth of his daughter and his family and his wife. You know, fatherhood is a great thing. It's an amazing thing. You're going to hate it at first. It's going to be a lot of sleepless nights and hopefully you will be blessed with a baby that sleeps all night and, you know, is perfect, but most likely not. Be prepared. But congratulations, my man. I'm very happy for you, you and Samaje. And also I want to give condolences to our city treasurer, Marty Eubank, who just lost his brother last week. I know him and the family are struggling right now and just want to let him know that we're thinking about him and the family and wishing them peace. Also would like to thank the, the school system for coming out today, our, our partners on the school board and with the school administration for being here. I think we had a great discussion, actually learned a little something today about school funding and also assessments and accreditation and just looking forward to working with them in the future to, you know, help bring our schools, you know, back up and not saying that they're not great already, but there's always room for improvement and, you know, we're here to do whatever we can to help make sure that our children have the best opportunities possible moving forward. Also, I said quickly, briefly during the work session, I wanted to thank Director Frank James and his team at Public Works for allowing me to tag along in a couple neighborhoods in the central district while we vacuumed up leaves off the curbs. Very educational. It made me really appreciate everything that it takes to make that happen. I think we take, I take that for granted. I, I know, at least I did, prior to participating and listening to the, to the guys about the challenges with that. So looking forward to getting through this season and may, hopefully making some improvements for the next season. Also, Ms. Hines, thank you so much for what you did at the Winter Carnival and providing all those items for our families. It's just so refreshing to see a young person actually doing something and, and not just talking about it. So thank you so much and congratulations on your, your graduation from NSU. And Mr. Davis, in reference to the ice machine, I have used that ice machine. My family's used that ice machine countless times and I hope that we can come to a resolution on that, to amend that ordinance in a way that it's going to make it possible for, for them to keep that ice machine and future ice machines. I'd love to see that business expand here in Newport News. So looking forward to getting some updates on that. And then last but not least, I know that we've been talking, we're starting to get really revved up now talking about the budget and I know that there's a lot of uncertainty right now. I don't like the word, using the word chaos, but there is chaos up in our capital when it comes to funding and we're going to, you know, do everything we possibly can to make sure that we can maintain the priorities of Newport News. And I know this council is going to do everything possible to make sure that no matter what happens north of us, that we maintain a great quality of life here for our citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Vice Mayor, over to you.
All right, I'm coming in hot. Mic check.
You're good.
All right, all right, all right. So first of all, I just want to say thank you to communications, thank you to IT. In the year twenty-twenty-five, this is definitely a, a possibility of being able to still participate in the duties that the folks have elected me to fulfill. And so I just want to say thank you to them for the short turnaround. My, my daughter was supposed to, her due date was February twenty-third, but clearly she decided that that was not going to fly, so she wanted to come a little early and watch the Super Bowl with us. So we are extremely grateful that she is healthy. My wife is doing phenomenal. So I thank all of council, all of staff and everyone in the community who has sent us some, some well wishes. At the conclusion of this meeting, I'm going to sleep because it's, it's well, well earned right now and my wife is up there while we've been meeting all day. My wife has been up there holding it down by herself, so I just want to shout her out and, at the same time as well. I do want to extend my I do want to extend my my sincere condolences to our our city treasurer. I was able to speak with him earlier today in regards to the passing of his brother. So send him prayers and thoughts his way for sure. And then the last thing I'll leave you all with is that, I don't know if the gentleman is still there, the owner of Smack and Max. If if he could shoot me an email, sir, if you if you were in the audience somewhere, please. And I'll see what I can I can do for you. I know that's, it's in the district. I remember when your business replaced the Viking Burger, I believe. And and we're so grateful to have you for sure. So I want to do everything within our power to to make sure you you feel like you are in a very clean city. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And I, again, I thank everyone for their well wishes and prayers.
Congratulations. I'll I'll be quick. So the the very first meeting that I have every week is with the Vice Mayor. It's 8:00 AM. And I texted him and said, hey, do you still want to have this meeting? Do you want to cancel? He's like, no, I'm locked in. I'm ready to go. And so what I would say is, we appreciate all your hard work. Just congratulations to you and your entire family on fatherhood and Samaje, and just appreciate your friendship. Hopefully, as Councilman Neely said, you slow down a little bit and stop sending us emails at 2:00 AM. But nobody works harder than you. Congratulations. And with that, we're adjourned. Thank you.